All right, I've got six months, we'll go ahead and get started. The way it follows me in order, just perfectly, please.
We follow the state of classes for our altitude for us and altitude in this. We're not supposed to speak with us if we got directed at work, but we'll just do the F muscle wisdom and decisions we'll make, not this can be future, which is the biggest feature was to go our way that this may not be with us. Yes, sir, all right. Thank you.
Motion. Attention, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go now, please.
Over.
Here.
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 All right. First up on the agenda is a resolution for bridge naming, college major name, Jeffrey Davis.
Is there anyone here for the Henry County from Smoky? Whereas William A. Alexander Henry was born August fifteenth, eighteen thirty-six, in Knox County, Kentucky, the son of Michak and Martha Carol Henry, and whereas on July twenty-fourth, eighteen fifty-nine, he married Amy Schumaker in Scott County, Tennessee, they had ten children, Ezekiel, Sarah, Mary Jane, Jemima, Anna, Rebecca, Luvania, Larissa, Alice, and John B., and whereas during the Civil War, he volunteered to serve Scott County Home Guard and was selected as one of his captains, performing honorable and distinguished service to his country, and whereas after his military service, Captain Henry became an influential leader in the Smoky community and throughout Scott County, and whereas among the many examples of his leadership and community influence include the operation of the grocery store and a boarding house and the donation of property to a school and post office where he served as its first postmaster, both of which were named in his honor. And whereas on June twenty-seventh, nineteen twenty-eight, Captain William A. Henry died in the Smoky Creek community of Scott County, Tennessee, and was served by the Henry Cemetery. Whereas his life and service to the community, county, and country are worthy of remembrance, honor, and recognition. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby hand the bridge located at the fifty-nine-hundred block of Smoky Creek Road in the first district of Scott County as the United States Army Captain William Henry Memorial Bridge in memory of Captain Henry and in recognition of his service to his community and county and country, and furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of Scott County and a copy of this resolution be given to the family of Captain William Alexander Henry. Mr. Chairman, under the motion to accept this resolution.
We accept the resolution without second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up we have the Eagle Scout, Mr. Ethan Douglas. We're going to postpone that one. I think there was a schedule issue there that wound up happening, but we will get that resolved and take that issue over in June. Next up, we have approval of minutes, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. We want to see if they can moment to wind up looking over the minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Jared Burke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Butler. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have no reason bonds. For no reason, we wind up having William L. Butler, Denise Marie Lamont, Catherine Leffler, and Carl L. Owens. In those bonds, we have Anna Phillips, Christopher Lee Pierce, Charles H. Sexton, Patricia A. Carey, and Donna Reeve. Do I have a motion to accept these no reason bonds? Motion by Toby Burke, do I have a second?
For four.
Second by Ms. Joyce Keaton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have financial reports. Take a moment, look through those.
Motion to accept.
Motion by any interest to accept the financial reports? Do I have a second? Second by Jared Burke. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have school matters. Number ten, school.
Scott High graduation happened this past Saturday. It went off well, but congratulations to Peter on his first graduation at Scott High as the principal. Middle school promotions start tomorrow and go through Thursday, and as of now, last day of school is scheduled for May the twenty-sixth. Follow school has unless you have any questions.
You may have anything for the show? Okay, make sure. Next up, chair your board. Does any chief?
Unless there are any questions.
Anybody in the commission have anything for Chief Bond? Next up, road matters. Next up, general public. If somebody in the general public wishing to speak, step up at this time. Please limit your conversation to five minutes and we'll work on it. Do you have to say your name and any?
My name's Phil Well. I represent the Glen Mary Community Center, and we just want to express our appreciation for the money that this is able to get that's greatly needed for the park at this time. May the twenty-seventh, which is on Saturday, is our annual Glen Mary Community reunion. I'd like to invite, you know, the all good, come be with us, do you want them, come be with us. Thoughts to that and thought of Glen Mary School Park.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Next up, community reports, parks and recreation.
The Parks and Recreation Committee met on January first, two thousand twenty-three. Members present, David Jeffers, Charlie Carey, David Butler Stevens, members absent, Deborah Thompson, Jennifer Cross, Tom Hearn, David Blue Day. Uh, new meeting was called at four o'clock P M. by Chairman David Jeffers. There was no form.
You heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept?
Uh, we have, uh, we have a gentleman on our clock.
With the direction to the resolution marking out one Jennifer Cross believing the other, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I like the motion.
Motion by Ms. Payne, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McBroom. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything?
Aye.
Next up, emergency services.
Emergency services, called over on May first, two thousand twenty-three. Members present, Sean McGray, Robin McBrer, Sean Carey, Taylor Ruggen Stevens, Toby Burke, Amy Jeffers, New York accent, David Blue Day. The most, first motion was by Taylor Ruggen Stevens and second by Sean Carey for the recommendations of hiring Darren Zachary for the emergency management position, voting aye. Second was a motion by Taylor Ruggen Stevens and second by Toby Burke to adjourn the meeting, voting aye.
You heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion by David Blue Day.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussion on minutes? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, have a resolution for the N A. appointment.
Whereas the position of director is what my evidence will conceal. Whereas after closing the vacation, we're doing applications and conducting meetings with three applicants in Scott County, where their directors have recommended Darren Zachary to the position. And whereas Mr. Zachary's hiring far as approved by the county legislature, legislative body, now therefore we are glad that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby confirms the appointment of Darren Zachary as Director of the Scott County Emergency Management Agency, and we have further resolved that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners and the Scott County Mayor Derrick Jeffers, former community and former director Lou Walker, for many years have dedicated services to the agency and Scott County.
One correction I would make, instead of three applicants, it was two applicants, but other than that, the resolution is, is fine there. Do I have?
Motion.
Motion by David Blue Day, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussion on the resolution? If not, both of my roll call.
Toby Burke.
Aye.
Jerry Burke.
Aye.
Butch.
Aye.
Javel.
Aye.
Chipwood.
Aye.
Daddy.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
Daddy Jeffers.
Aye.
Keaton.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Penny.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Resolution carries. Next up, we have building grants.
These building grants, meeting met on May the first, two thousand twenty-three. Members present, or David Jeffers, Sean McGray, David Butler Stevens, Joyce Keaton. Members absent, Jared Burke, David Blue Day, and Sheila Leffler. The meeting was called over at five twenty-two P M. by Chairman David Jeffers. Motion by Sean McGray, second by David Butler Stevens, to forward the resolution by naming the bridge located at the fifty-nine-hundred block, Smoky Creek, for William A. Henry, voting aye, all present, voting no, no. Motion by Sean McGray, second by David Butler Stevens, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye, all present.
Motion by Ms. Gray to accept the minutes, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Keaton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything else about building grants? Next up, community development.
Community development, meeting met on May the first. There was no action taken, the motion by Sean Carey, second by Joyce Keaton, to adjourn, voting aye, all present.
You heard the reading of the minutes for community development, do I have a motion to accept? Motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second? Second by David Blue Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before I go further on the, what we think about community development, there is two things I would want to wind up making their value aware, some updates. Uh, first one is from T. Deck, the ARCA update. Uh, so I'll go and read this, that I wanted to receive from the community development, um, folks, or partners. Scott County received a total of four million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents of ARCA water grant funds from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, T. Deck. The county committed four hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents, which is ten percent of the direct ARCA funding that was needed to match the T. Deck funding. The county transferred through resolution two million, two hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents of the T. Deck ARCA allocation to the town of Omaunah for water system improvements, as well as transferred through resolution four hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents to the town of Pusle for sewer system improvements. This led two million, two hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents of the original four million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents total allocation, which was applied for by Scott County on behalf of the Pusle Utility District. The state grant contract of county funds was finalized on May eighth, twenty twenty-three, so the county is now heading into the implement implementation phase of the project. The funding will cover the replacement of some existing asbestos cement A C water line, as well as the extension of new water lines to some areas of Hurricane Road, Co-Heel Roads, that do not have water service access. Project startup is underway with engineering design beginning soon. All funds will be extended by September of twenty twenty-six. So that while we're out there with the briefing from the Pusle Utility District Department, so, so moving on good with that. The other part is, uh, wanted to receive a notification from a court-appointed special advocate, CASA, uh, dated May first, twenty twenty-three. This letter is to notify the juvenile court of Scott County that the Board of Directors of CASA, the Tennessee Car Land, has made the decision to discontinue the CASA program in Scott County effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This decision has been under consideration for many months and has been a difficult decision to make. It is imperative that the community support the CASA program, volunteer donations and board members. Supporting Scott County has continued to decline despite the efforts of CASA, Tennessee Car Land. Therefore, the board has made the difficult decision to discontinue services in Scott County. In the future, if members of the Scott County community want to provide the support necessary for CASA program, this decision will be reconsidered. Please go free to contact Executive Director Kisha Waters. Any questions, they're concerned. Best regards, Kisha Waters. So, so the building, the office space next door, you know, will be vacant as of June thirtieth, so.
We want to try to get somebody in there and, um, we need to look at, we got this place underneath the, you know, straightforward.
Well, one good thing that we got going on in right now, and I had a chance to wind up speaking with, uh, Phillips, uh, there. He had some storage issues that he was bringing up there, and the prospect of that storage for construction of that, you know, after speaking was up on design, was going to be probably lower six-figure. I mean, it could be building, oh, we had that fire suppression and so on and so forth, the addition of that. So with that opening up over there next door, that could wind up solving another issue that, you know, that brought up very quickly, that other office wanted back as well. So I think, I think we're in the right directions, thanks to get resolved of that. So, and it's hard to straightforward community center, I mean, that's something we explore later too. So, yeah. All right, moving on in here, go, Bill.
The government committee is called before we make those two, two, three, following P M. by Chairman Keith Shad. Members present, Keith Shad, Kevin, those Chipwood, David Jeffers, Toby Burke, Sean Carey, members absent, David Blue Day, Chipwood. First action was motion by David Jeffers, second by Toby Burke. Uh, to board the resolution approval, uh, for the Pink Rock Bonanza Fire Department, go the roadblock on May sixth, two, two, three, from Pinky to, uh, Pinker, Rock, Edendale Road intersection, voting aye, all present. Uh, second action was motion by Toby Burke, second by David Jeffers, for name upon mill product drive, the twenty-three thirty, this net product run. Bell Ridge product drive, and running to the, not a, uh, fair, and keep these product load, open, open, is high, voting aye, all present. Uh, next, uh, was a motion by David Jeffers, second by Kelly Pope, Chipwood for the, uh, the twenty-twenty-three year, uh, local cooperation agreement between Scott County Government and Scott County and I, one more, and West, uh, New Fashion District, voting aye, all present. Uh, next, motion by David Jeffers, second by Kelly Pope, Chipwood for the approval of amendment three on the contract of the Senate through service, uh, voting aye, all present. Then I have motion by David Jeffers, second by Kelly Pope, Chipwood for the approval of forming a, forming a committee with two county commissioners, two F. Board representatives, and a plume representative of public defense office, and a plume representative of district attorney's office, voting aye, all present. And final motion by Sean Carey, I said by Toby Burke, to adjourn that, uh, voting aye, all present, with chairman, and motion.
Scott, most question, Chadwell, do you accept the minutes?
Aye.
Second by Ms. Gray. Any further discussion concerning the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
First up, we have resolution approval, vote at the stop, Chipwood. Whereas the Scott County Eastern Crew, certain grants weren't to county officials, and whereas the following grants have been presented for approval. Uh, one above the victim, victim with this for nature in amount of two-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars for the district attorney's office with no match requirement. Uh, second, book the family justice senate, general sessions court, amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, thirteen dollars with no match requirement. Uh, then the stock, domestic violence investigator for Scott County Sheriff's Department, amount of forty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, requiring match two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-three dollars, which has been approved by the county budget committee for the twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-two, fourth fiscal year. Um, then the, the stock, domestic, the not support Scott County, subject for color from a sixty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars with no match requirement. We have the, we have C I F, the Scott County Sheriff's Department, in the amount of seventy-four-thousand, thirty-nine dollars with no match requirement. Now therefore, it is off, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners, see my approval will be above, reference grant contract limits, execution by the Scott County Mayor, and be therefore resolved, three of those grants, the execution shall be effective on May the month twenty twenty-three.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Aye.
Motion by David Blue Day.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chadwell. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Uh, next we have the, uh, roadblock. Whereas there's been a question, Pink Rock Volunteer Fire Department to hold a roadblock, whereas this whole intervention has requested roadblocks from following locations in town. Uh, Pink Rock and Edendale Road intersection, Saturday, May sixth, twenty, twenty-three, from eight to two P M. Now therefore, we resolve Scott County Board of County Commissioners, across the roadblock location, May sixth, twenty, twenty-three, from eight to two.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept? Motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second? Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I can really make requests, none more. Whereas the request is made by Scott County and I, one more, same rose in the second district. Whereas the rose be named for non-moral purposes only, will not bring the roses to the county assistance. Whereas the names proposed, the farm and metal product drive, Bell Ridge product drive, and Hebe product drive, the second district, and now therefore, it is off, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners, see my approvals, the names of the second rows at farm metal product drive, metal ridge product drive, and Hebe product drive, rows in the second district for non-moral purposes only.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept? This is motion by Ms. Butler, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jared Burke. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Uh, next we have the agreement here. This won't take the.
It's the interlocked operation grant. I mean, it's a group, but not a grant group.
Are we in this right here?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
This is a new, a rate to be approved.
Is this, Ms. Thomas here with us, or any questions?
It's just an updated version. Our auditor suggested we update the old one, because the old one hadn't been signed, or the last one was two thousand fifteen or sixteen, so it's the same thing as the old one.
No changes, everything will be aye?
No changes.
So, okay, we'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Chadwell to approve that, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Payne, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next we have the food service, uh, new three of the sheriff's department. The new is made and entered, uh, from Scott County Sheriff's Department, client, son of food service company, uh, collectively parties. Whereas the parties entered into a certain food service and monetary, uh, agreement effective July one, twenty twenty. Whereas the parties have reached a, being in the pricing adjustment partnership, whereas the parties have desired to renew the second agreement on the current conditions, they get, that's good. And therefore, the, the parties, intended to be legally grounded by mutual agreement of followers. One, term agreed shall be extended for one additional year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, due to price, every shall charge, and client shall pay, and as you can see on through their, um, those percentages. Pay method shall be electronic via A F D A C H transfer or another type of electronic method, free upon between the parties, and in future pricing, pricing adjustments shall be made on annual basis and shall be free upon other parties or greater than less than the greater of five percent of the most recently released newest apartment later consumed price given. All burdened consumers, national average, unadjusted, food label, upon, with changes in the market factor, products, up to ninety days prior to anniversary of the commensurate date, company shall track client notification, but any adjustment, anniversary date, company close adjustment shall go in favor unless the parties have entered a different agreement with the alternative cost adjustment. The new is effective as of July one, coming from three, all the terms and conditions of the original agreement, the amount of time to time shall remain in full force and effective most otherwise amended as approved in this agreement.
Heard the reading of the agreement, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Keaton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussion on the agreement? If not, both of my roll call.
Toby Burke.
Aye.
Jerry Burke.
Aye.
Butch.
Aye.
Javel.
Aye.
Daddy.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
Daddy Jeffers.
Aye.
Keaton.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Green is passed. Next up, litter grant.
Uh, whereas each year, Scott County receives Tennessee Department of Transportation litter grant, provides fund for litter protection convention. Whereas the litter grant twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, will have, uh, maximum ability is turned, uh, I give off, amount of forty-four-thousand-two-hundred dollars, and whereas the Scott County, uh, will use this fund as a teaching provision and improve the condition on our local roads to streets, and therefore, now therefore, it will be resolved, Scott County Board of County Commissioners, approved, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four G. Dot, litter grant, and authorized to any mayor, Derrick Jeffers, to execute the contract that submit required of protection to the Department of Transportation.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Ms. Chadwell, second by Ms. Gray. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Equalization board. Whereas the Scott County Company says that Deputy Jeffers needs to replace four members of the proper equalization board, uh, prior to the June period. Whereas Ms. Jeffers recommends that Lane Schumaker, and Gina Bruce, Brooke Webb, and Lynn Smith replace Gerald Lloyd, Doris Sackery, Sandra Harkett, Sheila Pemberton, and after four years off, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners, see my approvals, the recommendation of one, Lane Schumaker, and Gina Bruce, Brooke Webb, Lynn Smith, proper equalization board, replacing the headboard, Doris Sackery, Sandra Harkett, and Sheila Leffler. I'm sorry, Sheila. Sheila Pemberton. Sheila Pemberton. Had to speak in there. Uh, being liberated, so the Scott County, uh, here's our performance shall take effective immediately and extend for June one, uh, twenty twenty-three, at which time the entire court shall be appointed to the state law.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Jared Burke, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ms. Chadwell. Any further discussion?
I'm surprised, I don't feel either.
It is made. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Uh, the equalization board will wind up being June one through June fourteen, so, you know, hopefully after that we get wrapped up, and we'll see what factory of each year there is. Yeah, maybe, you know. It's the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget committee, uh, called on the rank, one, twenty, twenty-three, and the president of the channel, David Jeffers, Bobby Green, and his action, Sheila Leffler, Derrick Burke. Meeting was called over at five o'clock nine P M. by Chairman of the channel. First action was motion by David Jeffers, second by Bobby Green, approval of budget amendments, uh, voting aye, all present. Uh, next was motion by Bobby Green, second by David Jeffers, to adjourn at noon, I vote aye, all present.
Heard, motion by Ms. Gray to accept the minutes, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jared Burke. Any further discussion on the minutes? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, the budget amendments.
Uh, there, there has been one additional, on the number eleven.
Yeah.
To that motion, to reseparate number eleven, so we can check on numbers one.
Yeah.
So, Troy Burke with one.
So do I have a motion to accept the current budget amendments that are currently there, except for amendment number eleven? Motion by David Jeffers.
I'll accept that one.
Second motion by Chadwell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, the amendment number eleven from County General Law.
Uh, yeah, I think I forgot to bring this, uh, who were in the budget hearing, uh, the county, uh, budget committee wanting to approve a three-five-hundred-dollar contribution to the Magic National Library, so I'm bringing that one, and then the jail had that COVID grant for two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, thirty.
And then the jail had that COVID grant for two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, throwing it forward and purchasing vehicles now. So that is that grant there, and then the stop grant that traveled adding it onto it. And then, of course, the mayor on that communication for twenty-seven thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars, ninety-six cents, going percent that so that he can move forward with that before June thirty.
And what the communication equipment is, that that tower office getting over the copper wire from dispatch to the tower there that, you know, basically that thing went down. You could be out already with patients, so that's just to get that repaired and move on. So do I have a motion to accept this amendment?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Gray to have a second.
Second.
Keating.
Keating.
Okay, second on Ms. Keating, any further discussion on the amendment? All those favors say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have Finance Committee. I'll take three.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I think Finance Committee, uh, made it twenty twenty-three, probably a word of Scott County, like you, uh, Chadwell. Uh, due to present, the challenge should let you on the broom to the Jefferson campaign, out of King, Bill Hall. Also present, Bill, John Scrump, and Paint the Ball. First, my motion by Bill Hall, second by County King, open bids, voting high, all present. Uh, then a motion by County King, uh, second by Jared Jefferson, award the optics bid to Yorick Sons, incorporated for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, voting high, uh, all present. Uh, next motion by Jared Jefferson, second by Tom Payne, for the compact track motor bid to Air Force Authority Board, voting high, all present. Uh, motion by County King, second by Jared Jefferson, award the liquid asphalt bid to Pleasant Materials Company for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, voting high, all present. Um, and a motion by Jared Jefferson, second by Bill Hall, uh, to award the field bid to Petroleum Traders Corporation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Six acts of motion by County King, uh, second by Jared Jefferson, award the painter painting to Highland Markets Incorporated for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, voting high, all present. This motion by County King, second by Bill Hall, award the bar rail of Anchor Bid to Highland Markets for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Um, voting high, all present. Motion by Bill Hall, second by County King, request the Finance Department to prepare comparison on tire bids for the month of June twenty twenty-three, voting high, all present. Uh, motion by County King, second by Jared Jefferson, request the Finance Department to prepare comparison on the tire quarter bid for the month of June twenty twenty-three, voting high, all present. Um, motion by Bill Hall, second by Tom Payne, for the, uh, Vortex, H O, frame, two words of bid for Scott County Board of Education, voting against all present. Next, a motion by Jared Jefferson, second by Bill Hall, for the new used oil heater for the force, sand bid to Scott County Waste, uh, for solid waste board, voting against all present. Uh, then a motion by Robyn Green, second by County King, for Gina Andrew's collection tank and steel bid for Scott County Solid Waste Board, voting against all present. We had a motion by Jared Jefferson, second by Tom Payne, for the new used oil storage tank and spill can, bid for Scott County Solid Waste Board, voting, uh, against all present. I finally had a motion by Bill Hall, second by Tom Payne, to turn that meeting, voting high, all present.
You have heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Chadwell, accept, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Butler, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Sorry, there are questions. The, uh, the tire bid, uh, is that going to be recycled center or tires that was on the ticket?
Tire bill and vehicles, first.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna mention, just so everyone knows, as we go down through there, some of them, when we said the finance, like, for example, the tire, there's so many, so many tires listed. So, what we've been doing the last three or four years is we come back to the Finance Department. They will go through, look at what tires we order, and bring us a better breakdown of the tires so that we can actually see a comparison of what we order, uh, what we spend, and get a true, uh, lowest bid, uh, option. So you have that on the tires, and I think tire quarters. Uh, so that's where we see that, that's what's happening. They will get that together, bring that back in the next month Finance Committee so we can have a better decision. And when you ever, we see it go to the, uh, solid waste board, that's their fund, it's not coming out our fund, so we send that to them. At the same time with the school district, and as far as the school district, without a burden, it's their money, uh, so I respect them for your, uh, I just want to make that a connection, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any further discussion left on the matter? If not, all those favors say aye. Any opposed? Resolution carries. All right, we moved to other matters, uh, we'll have about three things on other matters as far as to take, uh, note up here. Uh, the first one is going to be the section of minutes on the O and W Bridge Committee, as well as on the minutes for the other records commission, does everyone have a copy of those in front of you? Do I have a motion to accept minutes, uh, for the O and W Bridge Committee? Motion by Miss Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, Ms. Payne, any further discussion? All those favors say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. The next I have the minutes from the public records commission in front of you. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? Motion by David Jefferson, do I have a second? Second by Sheila Butler, any further discussion on the public records minutes? Not all those favors say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. All right, next one that's going to bring up, uh, one that's come in front of us, uh, didn't get a chance to bring it up on June first because it didn't get signed into law till June fifth by Governor Lee, uh, the state of Tennessee. So, what we have happening is, is that effective this year, June twenty, June twenty twenty-three, uh, the June 10th will be recognized as a state holiday, as well as it currently is as a federal holiday. So, for most business, for most offices here to include county clerks and circuit floor clerk and basically every county government office in Scott County, uh, the national closed, a lot of business here is closed. So, um, I was going to wind up bringing it up to the attention to see if the county commission would be interested in amending the current holiday list to include the June 10th holiday, which is currently recognized now by the state of Tennessee as well as the federal government. So I was going to see if you all want to wind up amending that holiday list in order to allow county employees off for the holiday. Someone, Dave? Motion by David Blue Day to amend, do I have a second?
That. If we do not take it off, will affect us on our, uh...
That's always safe, that if we don't recognize fake federal holidays, that it could affect our decisions, but that's one.
Well, second on Ms. Gray, any further discussion? One.
Chief, Chief Black, twenty twenty-three, chief.
We'll do, say, who doesn't affect, maybe? Well, one of the, one of the rescheduling.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So, what, we got a mission, or a duty?
That's one, okay. So, currently, we have June nineteenth as a recognized holiday, reschedule the June nineteenth County Commission meeting for June twentieth at six P M. So, just move that to your motion, Mr. Day, okay? You, Ms. Gray, okay? Any further discussion? Voting our road call.
Holmberg. Jared Burn.
Aye.
Budjohn.
Aye.
Chadwell.
No.
Jeffers.
No.
Debbie.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
David Jefferson.
Nope.
Keating.
No.
Pinker. Payne.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next one.
I have a question about some of the things that's involved in the community, but, uh, I have some questions about, uh, the single red flag law that, uh, that the governor has decided is going to, excuse me, is, did that happen?
There, my understanding, there was a discussion that was going to get brought up under that, I think in special session, that's supposed to convene, I believe, in August, from my understanding, as far as that goes. So, they'll wind up convening a special session at the General Assembly, obviously wind up discussing it. So I'm sure it'll probably be, uh, Senator Yeager, as far as, uh, Representative Keating, I'm sure will probably wind up being here a lot for the different constituents concerning the matter. So, you know, if you don't wind up here in front of us, they wind up reaching out to them as far as that goes.
Could the County Commission send a letter to our representative, our senator, and to the government office, please, asking them to respect our right of the second mental sanctuary? I think it's already passed for installation, do we have it?
It's already gotten close, so they know where we're at, man, so.
Well, I can ask them to respect our stand on the red flag law, so that's a big reason why we have the, uh, second mental sanctuary movement.
Well, I mean, it was one of those things that with the, with the amendment sanctuary that wanted to have, and I mean, you know, when it was passed, I mean, it was kind of one of those things that it was one of those things that was passed as a symbolic gesture, you know, as far as having legal bearing. You know, it wanted to be whatever it wanted to be, so I mean, it, it, it's one of those things, the biggest thing we wanted to do is that if you want to have that, that serious, that serious conversation on how that deed went going, you know, then when he reached out, Representative Keating and Senator Yeager on that, and if nothing else, asking them to come here to County Commission, okay, and see if they can have a conversation with us in person instead of, instead of the letter, you know, and I get all thirteen somewhere. But we could wind up requesting them coming in, say, July, early August, we go back in session and have that discussion, I could reach out and, what?
Yes. They were provided a copy of every resolution, but they should not be two years later.
Joe Ellis, we have you left on the, on here for the last, last business of the day.
Thank you for allowing me to come and, um, I need to leave with the Budget Committee for my ten minutes to talk about my budget. And so what I share with you now is what I did share with them, uh, but I wanted to come before you, before you get to file a vote, because unless there's a special call meeting, I'm assuming you all will be voting on the budget at the end of Jan next month. Um, but I was, at that meeting, um, I had requested to be present when my budget was discussed, and it was discussed, and I was at present. But I did, I was informed at another meeting, just a general statement, that the wish list didn't get approved. Um, and so my wish list was what you heard before, was an assistant, and for me to have insurance for the county. Uh, what I presented was, um, after the last time I stood before you, um, which was in November, I started keeping track of my hours. Um, and from that November until I met with the, with the Budget Committee in April, twenty-two weeks had passed. And during that twenty-two weeks, fifteen weeks of the twenty-two, I had worked between forty and fifty-seven hours each of those twenty-two, each of those fifteen weeks. For the other seven weeks, there was a holiday in each of those seven weeks, but even in those weeks, I worked between thirty-two and thirty-nine hours. I also presented them the number of cases that had kind of crossed my course from September the first, when I took the bench to August, to April the sixth. And we had opened a total of a thousand six hundred and forty-five cases. Uh, to break that down, six hundred and seven of them were criminal cases, two hundred and ninety-six were civil, there were ten divorces, ninety orders of protections, forty-two probates, four hundred and fourteen traffic cases, uh, Department Children's Service juvenile cases, fifty-nine, and other juvenile cases that included billing points under retroacy was a hundred and twenty-seven, for a total of a thousand six hundred and forty-five cases. And during that same time period, um, I closed a thousand three hundred and ten cases. So they came for me, uh, and left, um, Roger's kitchen. So I touched a thousand, a thousand nine hundred fifty-five cases. I wanted the committee to know that, so they would know this is anything but a part-time job. It is considered part-time by statute sixteen dash fifteen dash five zero zero two, where it talks about the classes of counties. Uh, and because we are, our population's below thirty thousand, we are in that class. And the part-time is a, is a two-word in a code that allows part-time judges, where the population's under thirty thousand, to have a part-time legal practice. Well, I don't have time for a part-time legal practice, and I'm fine with that, uh, but, because I'm on the bench four days a week, and the fifth day is set for special settings. Now, those four days a week, there's one day a week where I get out at quarter around ten o'clock, sometimes not, but the other three days, they're going there between four and five. I did have the opportunity to speak with some other part-time general sessions judges at the last judicial conference I attended. And there were five there of the same type with me, and all five of those part-time general sessions judges, so counties offered them insurance. Um, and that was Fentress, Morgan, Pickett, Union, and I think Overton County was the fifth one, I'm not sure. And so when I left, the last time I left, you all had voted for me not to be on the county's insurance plan, and for me not to have an assistant. Um, most of you said, I'm not voting no, because Judge Ellis doesn't need help, it's just, we need her to come back to the budget, when the Budget Committee made. So the Budget Committee met, and I came back, and I don't know why, I don't know if just the wish list got marked off, and there was no discussion, I don't know. Um, because I wasn't there, and those conversations were taken place. But I would propose, the last time when I left, I thought, okay, I guess I need to come up with how I'm saving the county money, or where the money can come from for these two things. So from my court position, or my assistant position, I would ask that you consider, uh, let not be part of the opioid money that's coming to Scott County, that some is here already. Um, and because I fought the addiction in every single court except for my probate court. And I can't do that long, be on the bench, I can't fight it while I'm on the bench. I do it with the litigants in private, that I can't be out talking to people, trying to get people to support, um, keeping our kids off drugs. And I talked to the committee about the vaping problem, and other vaping to H C, getting high in schools, vaping, it's odorless, smokeless, and teachers can't see, but they're in the classrooms, very bad. That's a big fight there, but I need help doing that. Union County contacted them last week, and their county commission issues imparted the opioid money to start a recovery court. In our eight judicial districts, Scott County has the only misdemeanor recovery court. It was the first in the state, Judge Cock first opened it. And so they are coming here to see what our recovery court director does, what our peer specialist does, how much money it costs for drug testing, how much money, uh, our commission has already put in Ireland every court, and they are starting one, that they're going to do tonight. So I do think that some of the opioid money helping me by this cause and admission to our recovery court is beneficial to our county, it's needed, and certainly, um, all of the people that come before me. As far as insurance goes, the cost for the county to come run insurance is five thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars and some odd cents, eight cents or something like that. Since I've been on the bench on Monday and Wednesdays, um, I've been able to close court around five. There have been five or six days for a close to, um, after six o'clock. Um, but when Judge Cock was on the bench, his courts often went on those two days to eight and ten o'clock. So I'm saving the county, either in comp time or money, however it's awarded, to two clerks and two officers. So I do think if you take two clerks... So I do think if you take two clerks pay, and two officers pay, over a year's time, they're not having to work to eight to ten o'clock, that that would certainly cover my pay for my insurance. I don't know if you've got any questions, or if you're tired of hearing me, but I promise I'm going to keep coming back as long as I need to, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Judge Ellis. Eric, may we consider our budget committee will go from there.
Thank you.
This way.
What appearance is the process? What appearance is the process? And, uh, those, those officers will walk for a couple of months, two, three months, and it's too long ago.
Okay.
We don't have the cost of any, we don't have the value of any, you know, right?
No.
We're nowhere near, we're probably a half week or, and we're just, and we're, we're just kind of waiting right now for the de-legalization board to meet, which is going to take that two weeks. And then hopefully, I'm hoping that we, we can have, the national head, Donald Patrick, sit there, and we'll be in business and know where we're at.
So we really, we really don't know how many, how much money to pack, that it's not a threat.
We don't know what our packs.
Well, definitely, you'll get hurt here. So this is the process, it's ongoing.
And I, I appreciate knowing that, this is my first year to go through it. When I was told to come to this ten-minute meeting, I specifically asked, uh, when will you be discussing it? And I need to be notified, because I want to be there. And I was told that it would be scheduled and be announced. Uh, well, that meeting came and went. Uh, I heard at one of these meetings that the budget committee was going to be meeting on a certain day, and I showed up, uh, just to hear, you know. And I was told, this is put the committee to me, it's not public, and nobody, you know, it's not for you all to talk. And I'm fine with that, but I just, I didn't know the process. I now know the process a little bit more on that day, and I'll just wait to the end of the day and come back in. I've got my house thirteen minutes, and I can hear. Uh, but I didn't know, so, uh, and I didn't know how much the full commission hears, you know, or if the budget committee just gives a proposal, and then the committee goes on back. I want, it's important enough to me to fight addiction and to have an assistant. It's important enough to me to have health insurance, because right now I am working a second job to pay my health insurance. Uh, and I want to spend that time working on Fridays, but I'm only working at a job instead of coming in on Sundays to get ready for my due law court. So I didn't know how much you all here have, um, but when I was told that the wish list, you know, we just went through and the wish list was marked off, I just wanted to come and say, it's, uh, more than a wish list for me, it's a need.
Thank you, Judge Ellis.
I said, the whole administration's, this is the whole, I think, uh, the, 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 I think it's ridiculous that's part-time job, so first one, I don't know, I don't know, I think it's ridiculous that that's part-time job. I heard it, actually, they have three million twenty dollars left, I think, I think.
Well, it's one of those that will wind up definitely getting that sorted out through the budget committee process to go from there, because I mean, it's not an issue that will wind up getting resolved, we see, but, but, but.
Not now, with the budget process, by now, budget, we're in the black, not thousand dollars.
So if it stays as is, that's what we have, the thousand dollars, so. We can take raises away from the forties, I wouldn't agree with it. So that was the key, was the forty rate, so we would pass, we, uh, have, we passing, budget is black, we passing budget as red, I do not support that, but people deserve a balanced budget, it's a minor thing to do. Uh, or let's go cutting and find money elsewhere, uh, we cut the forty bases we have in there, or if you base taxes. So that's, right now, we're at, uh, twelve hundred dollars maybe to, so I'm going to run that in black, last time.
Your gas prices.
Yeah, one last year. That number could change, we get fine numbers, based on what we have right now. Uh, that's what we have, uh, in the budget. So, and that term wish list is just a common term used by the budget, it's not, everybody knows these things are not just people for all things, families, because they want everybody, nobody that doesn't want, everybody have what they want, everybody have, but I think on request, had to get around five hundred thousand dollars. And we can, we can need, uh, with the budget, we're great in the sorry. Uh, quick return, that, it's just, we, so that, that, that's the process, it's just, uh, getting, it, it's not simple, but it does kind of have a symbolism, this, um, make that number not being a wreck, having it in the black. And, uh, the way we got it so far, you know, it's not fine, and that number could change, and we could have extra money when that final number comes in, that's what we're hoping for, but we can't, okay, we can't say what we want to. Uh, kind of a, a position, that's, the way we was able to get it works out now, is like, it's already thirty something thousand of the rate, so that's, that's worth that. And all update, it's time to meet, and if you're ready to come, I try to update, try to update, it's like my first session did, uh, before.
Anything in the way of announcements? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, your Eagle Scout is here.
Oh, mind if, come on. All right, I believe you know if you're going to make it or not, but we're glad you didn't, so come on up. We'll be turning to Eagle Scouts, and we'll say every resolution.
The residents are recognizing Scott County Eagle Scout, Ethan Douglas. Whereas Ethan Douglas is a member of the Boy Scouts of America, Scott County Truitt Ninety-three, and has earned the highest rank of Eagle Scout and became the seventy-fourth Eagle Scout of Scott County Truitt Ninety-three on the eighteenth day of February of two thousand twenty-three. And whereas as a Cub Scout, he achieved the ranks of Tiger, Wildcat, Wolf Bearer, and Legalist. As a Legalist, Ethan earned many hands and felthers, and earned his Arrow of Life Award. And whereas Ethan joined, uh, Truitt Ninety-three in two thousand eighteen, and has since earned the required twenty-one merit badges, and obtained six ranks to become an Eagle Scout, he has earned over fifty merit badges. And whereas while a Boy Scout, Ethan has held leadership positions such as patrol leader and senior patroler, he is also the recipient of the World Conservation Award, and believed no trace. And whereas Ethan is the sixteen-year-old son of Dustin and Julie Douglas of Oneida, he is the grandson of Danny and Misty Douglas of Winfield, Tennessee, and twining Terrillaxton of Oneida, and he is the great-grandson of Terrillaxton of Oneida. And whereas Ethan is a sophomore at Oneida High School, where he is a member of Bay Club, FFA, and DSH. Ethan enjoys music, and can often be found with a guitar in his hand, and spending time with his friends. He is a member of the Grace Christian, or Grace Creation Church, and therefore, now, for being resolved, Scott County Board of County Commissioners and County Mayor Jared Jeffers hereby recognize Ethan Douglas for his outstanding achievement to become the seventy-fourth Eagle Scout of Boy Scout Truitt Ninety-three. Furthermore, the Board of County Commissioners, Mayor, and all residents of Scott County wish him continued success with Boy Scout Truitt Ninety-three and in his future endeavors. Further, a copy of this resolution will be placed into the permanent record of Scott County, and a copy will be presented to Ethan Douglas in his name.
Heard a reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept? Motion by Sean and Gray, do I have a second? Second one, Mr. Butler, any further discussion? All those voters say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Now, where we were, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Butcher, any further discussion? All those voters say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned, Mr. Stink, you carry that piece out, correct?